We will wait for the attendees to fill the meeting room here. Seen anybody yet? Cheryl, do you want to give Penny or Ed a call and just see if they're having a text? All there is it Sue is he has is always on the attendee yeah. I'm gonna pause the recording for a moment since we haven't start started yet. Hello, everybody. So this is the Needham Housing Authority Board of Commissioners meeting, our regular monthly meeting for September. And I just want to note for the record that this is a hybrid meeting, so it's available. For in-person attendance as well as virtual attendance, and we do have some people online. As permitted by chapter 107 of the Acts of nineteen twenty twenty two. An act right relative to extending certain state emergency accommodations that was passed by the general court. Signed by Governor Healy and is in effect until March thirty first twenty twenty five, at which point I expect it to be assembled because we've all moved into the twenty first century here with our our virtual meetings here. And I'm going to call the role here of Commissioners, Reg Foster is here.
Jim Flanagan is here.
Ed Schreiber is here.
Penny Kirk is here.
Janice Bennett is here.
So we have a quorum and everybody present, and then I'm just going to note for the record that the Secretary, the Needham Housing Authority, who is Cheryl Gosman, our Executive Director, provided adequate notice of this meeting and had it posted at the clerk's office on September sixteenth, setting forth the date and time and place of this meeting and the agenda. So that's great. Um announcements from the chair. This is an unusual meeting for two reasons. One is that we're going to start off with a public hearing on the twenty twenty five annual plan that's been distributed and noticed and so forth, and we will go through that process of receiving comment input and considering whether we can vote to approve it and staying on track of our schedule of obligations to the state. And secondly, we have two guests with us this this afternoon, this evening. We have Betsy Collins on the left there and Mike Mattis on the right. They are from our new developer partners and they're going to make a presentation on who they are and what they've done in the past and how they're going to be able to help us and I'm with the boards. Okay, you will see it's later on in the men meeting agenda, but I was thinking that we could move it up right after we do the public hearing so that we don't make them stay here all night and they can get home for dinner. And hopefully we can too. So hearing no objection. We have to open the public hearing. And by the way, I'm going to go to resident comment and input after the public hearing. And of course, during the public hearing as well. But I also thought we would let Betsy and Mike present first and then take resident comment and input, you know, as informed by that introductory session, so. I make a motion that we open the fiscal year twenty twenty five state aided public housing annual plan hearing. Do I hear a second?
Second.
Second.
Unfortunately, we have to call the role each time, so Reg Foster votes aye.
Jim Flanagan votes aye.
Ed Schreiber votes aye.
Penny Kirk, aye.
Janice Bennett, aye.
So the hearing is now open. Let me turn the floor over to you, Cheryl. We we have many, many pages in our packets and congratulations on pulling that together on time.
Thank you, thank you. So chair, so this is our state annual plan. It's a document compiled by the housing authorities staff. In advance of each new fiscal year, the plan serves as spoken tool for the local housing authority to reflect upon the prior fiscal year. And as an opportunity to develop clear and transparent plans that builds on successes, identifies needs and corrects any issues that have arisen in prior years. Additionally, the annual plan is an important tool for tenants who may use the documents better understand the operations and needs of their housing authority, advocate for change, changes to policies and procedures and access data about the housing authority and participate in the housing authorities governance. The elements of the plan include the Needham Housing Authority includes the overview of the agency, capital improvement plan, maintenance and repair plan, operating budget, narrative responses to performance management review or PMR findings, policies, waivers, flossery and other elements. Uh, the plan was put together in over the summer and posted on our website and in our community rooms. And and that's it. I'm open for any questions or comments.
We have any questions and comments from residents that are in the room? Go ahead. Yeah. I'm sorry, we can turn the air conditioner off. That would have helped a lot. Yeah, just, you know, it's unfortunately, yep.
I will.
Okay, so the question is, do you have any questions or comments on the plan for twenty twenty five?
I'm Marlene Costa, I'm a resident at Chambers and I'm also the elected treasurer of the London Chambers Residents Association, which is hopefully going to be approved soon. Now, I have not actually read through this annual plan because I did not know where it was posted, however. I'm assuming that there are plans for the maintenance of the properties. I know that there was a five-year plan that I was told about when I first moved here, which was approximately two and a half years ago. And it included upgrade of the heating system, and this is in chambers. Heating systems, thermostat, new windows. On those three items. Now, I know for the past two winters that I've lived here, the heating system in my building and I believe which is building thirty forty forty-two and also building twenty-five twenty-seven, I believe. That at least in my building, we did not have any heat for approximately number of fourteen days because of malfunctions with the heating systems. You know, the heat pumps or gas furnace or whatever the equipment that is currently installed. Two or three days here, two or three days somewhere else to the total of approximately about almost thirteen or fourteen days for the whole winter. And it's not acceptable, so. I was told there was some sort of test run down on building number fifteen seventeen in Chambers to try to upgrade heating systems in the existing new existing buildings. And the only information I heard about it is that it did not go well. And then they decided to fall off the project and not update any of the heating systems or even the thermostat. Which are obviously not accurate either. And as far as the issue with windows and new windows, that's something that's been I mean, more than five years to the best of my knowledge, and there has not been, because we have the single pane windows, which really doesn't provide any insulation. You know, they're very drafty and don't provide any insulation, so. Especially combine that with heating systems that are not working properly. So as you can imagine, that's really I mean, it's it's clearly a violation of our rights as tenants. So I just want to know if this plan this and now this annual plan, is there any attempt that's going to be made in the monies that have been set aside to address those issues? Also, there's a two billion dollar package that was just approved by the state for public housing. And each city or town, of course, will apply for their portion of this two billion dollars for capital improvements and large maintenance projects. So if we don't have the money from the town or wherever those funds come from, why can't we tap into that money, that our portion of the two billion dollars to address? You know, an issue such as heating systems and windows that are in excess of at least you know, fifty years old from the early seventies for that matter. You know, every time people seem to bring up this question, the answer is always, oh, don't worry, we're going to tear everything down and everything's going to be beautiful. That's really not an answer in my opinion. I mean, the thing is, we need some kind of commitment from the housing authority. There's monies available. Especially with this new two billion dollar package that we can expect to have upgrades to our heating systems for the winter and windows that are of appropriate cold and especially the heating systems and also there are issues with some of the electrics and the circuit boxes, which are definitely below par. That's my main issue with the plan.
Any any comments you want to offer here, Cheryl?
Well, I'd love to have this conversation with with you, Marlene.
Wait a minute, wait a minute, let's let her respond to you. Okay, before you, it's not a debate, it's just taking in, go ahead. Yeah, thank you.
Love to have this conversation with you offline.
Speak more loudly.
Can you get me to mean? No, so I would love to have this conversation offline with you. And I will tonight send you a copy of our annual plan that comes out every year for the last twenty-five years. And I'll send that to you so that you can review it before our discussion. And then let's have a conversation about all the all of the issues that you've raised and we can go from there. Okay, it's quite complicated, not so much, but there's, you know, we can, we can talk about that offline and and give you the clarity that you're seeking.
I would add two things too. We're one of, as we all know, after a lot of hard work by certain people in this room, will be approving the new tenants association. And this is the perfect kind of discussion to have as a representative of the tenants. So, you know, I think we look forward to that. When you get a chance to review the budget, you'll see we do have formula funding in there for various projects are all listed out and itemized. You know, and so, you know, that's part of the discussion that you can have. And the the to address your question about the two billion dollars of Affordable Home Act funding, actually, there's more than that. Yes, that is, you know, that for taking the in the larger, you know, the sense of your question. If the Affordable Home App Act does have badly needed additional funding that hasn't been there before to focus on the existing state housing units that have, it's not just us, there's a couple hundred of them throughout the Commonwealth in the same situation, and that's something you can have the discussion about as well. So I thank you for that input. I couldn't, I agree, we need to upgrade our existing units and and try to make them more comfortable and more livable and more dependable. You know, those stories, you know, we have a, that's our job to be an excellent landlord and take care of our properties better than we've been able to do up until now. So I really agree with that. I'm going to ask, see, is there any other comments?
Reg, can I chime in please?
Yes.
Can I chime in?
One second, one second, Janice, then you, okay.
Would you like a hard copy of that or electronic copy of that?
A hard copy would be more.
Great, okay.
Yes, yes.
Deliver that tomorrow.
Yes, Janice, go ahead.
Hi, Marlene, I I don't know you, but Donald knows.
You, by the way, just.
I see.
Oh, I see you now. Okay, sorry, my mistake. Okay.
Okay, Marlene, I don't know you, but Donald definitely knows me and I wish I had been made aware of the situation. There's no, there's no rhyme or reason for you not to have feet for two weeks. That's ridiculous. And Donald, shame on you for not contacting me on that issue. I might have been able to help.
So, all right, so let us keep it to the hearing because we wanted, you know, get through everybody's comments. Anybody else in the room? I'll go over here to Helen and then to you, Ross, and then anybody who's an attendee, if you have comments, please raise your hand so I can see who's there who might have a comment. Go ahead, Helen.
Awesome. I was the guest president, as you know.
By the way, this is Helen Guerigosian, in case we, those of don't who don't already know who you are. Speak up though, because of the air conditioning.
The audio is very spotty. I can't.
Yeah, Helen, if you could come up near the speakerphone because it's it struggles when it's that far away from you.
Good developer in that process. And I got to meet a lot of dedicated folks who given many, many hours to study upon everything. And see it as a solution. Some of this stuff that were going through in this community, waiting for a long time for a lot of stuff. And I see it in the crystal ball that maybe someday we're going to get our turn to be developed in here and not have to struggle with single pane windows, etc., etc. But I do want to commend Cheryl for getting it on the capital improvement plan and promising that we're going to get paid finally down and through this this street all the way down to the dead end, which was something I was trying to do as president for a long time, we were bringing it up and and it was on the agenda, the end of the emergencies. One of the emergencies was they had to go around doing the different furnaces and upgrade them, take away the old eating things that they had. Another one was a bursted pipe or something in plumbing.
Yeah.
They postponed it, etc., etc. It's always something, something at seabeds. They would take that funding away when already they get it paid, so going to pray that nothing takes that money away or we got it on the plan and get it done all the way to the end of chambers and they're going to make allowance from what I understand, I met with Cheryl. And they're going to make curbing so the people with handicaps can get off the curb nice with their walkers and their wheelchairs. Right now, it's very hard to get off those curbs, especially when they bury the snow, etc., etc. So on a positive note, that's a dream come true, right? Because it looks like a minefield.
Yeah, we, it's long overdue, the question about it.
And they'll put some white stripes, as you told me, people will still be able to park with their parking now. And it's a good thing, you know, I want to just bring that up on the record that it's going to be done. And a lot of people who might be listening in on this meeting have been waiting and proffiting a bit to have the paving approved, so. Goes to that.
Great, any other comments on the plan for now?
It over and I see a lot of
Great.
good things coming, and as you know, the paving is not cheap.
Yeah, no, no, and I think we got, we got the paving done at Seabeds and Cook, so I think we've got a little bit of a track record on how to get this thing done. Let me go, I'm just, this, the agenda item is taking comments on the twenty-five plan. Ross, do you want to go next? Go ahead. And I see Calpana, I see your hand is up and anybody else wants to contribute, please put your hand up, okay? Go ahead, Ross.
Yeah, thank you. Ross Donald, Chamber Street. Before I forget, well, I didn't want to start off by saying, in addition to the physical document, the annual plan is also a process of public engagement. Okay. One of the ways we've tried to involve the public, the local resident public, is to have a library. We had the information on a table, so that's all gone. We're trying to make that public, you know.
Comments just on the public plan, if you want to bring that up in the resident input.
I can bring it up then, it's part of the plan.
No, no, it's not part of the capital, five-year capital plan, the library, it's just on what's in, you know, in there, like Helen's comment on the pavement.
I'll bring it up later.
Yeah, thanks.
But the the plan makes clear that there are processes by which the information was distributed, notices made. One of them is posting it on the local housing authority webpage, and it also refers to, well, I'll get to it eventually. There is scheduled usually, it seems to require that there be a hearing before the meeting, that it not be at the same time. I mean, we're squeezing it down to three minutes per person or something like that. That's not much of a hearing. Let's see. The this, I'd like to request that I don't know what your schedule is as far as reviewing the plan, making any adjustments as you see fit and getting it to the state, but you're allowed to with see that the local housing authority shall also accept written or emailed comments from the LTO at least through the date of the public hearing or later as specified by the local housing authority. So you could allow a little bit more time to get public comments. And what I'd like to do is request since the LTO is our residents association is asking for recognition that you allow that time for the LTO to be the the residents association be recognized as an LTO. I mean, it might be up for this meeting. I I read the agenda and I don't know whether you meant to bring it up and offer it to be considered at the next meeting or whenever, but.
So we can address the schedule. Are there any other comments?
Yeah. The Yeah, and and I don't know, I don't know why you won't, you you're you're don't like me bringing it up because that's part of the process.
No, no, it's just the topic wasn't the kind of the capital plan, and we're talking about the library in the yeah, community rooms, a different topic here.
The capital plan is a public document.
That's correct. I just wanted to let me move on to the next person who has the hand up.
Well, I have it right here. There was one item, it's the it's eighteen million dollars for Linden Chambers. I brought it up the first time I saw it in in one of the budget things, and the response was that it was a placeholder. And then when I asked, followed up and there was no further elaboration on that, and we see the number again.
Yeah.
It'd be nice to see some details.
So, well, I'll ask Cheryl to address that. Any other comments?
Yeah, it'd be nice to get information on the one point three eight six million pre-development money such as traffic studies, the Arbus report and the other things that I've been requesting since November.
I'm sorry, but that's not part of the fiscal year, you know, the twenty-five annual plan.
Annual plan.
It's it's a different subject. It's a different subject, yeah.
Well, that's a number in the item, other funds, eighteen point two seven.
No, 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 that is a good question.
That's, that's what that was. And it's it's also here redevelopment of Linden and Chambers.
That's a good question. But do you have anything else? I'm just trying to move us along because we have an awful lot of things on our agenda.
You are, you can cut me off.
I'm not cutting you off, I'm asking you to get to your, any other comments that you have, if you don't mind.
Can I continue now?
Okay, go ahead.
I do. I'd like to, there's always been an issue about the security cameras, you know, and the state has been involved with emergency funding and so forth, and it's listed here again as amount spent prior to this plan, hundred and eighty-four thousand. It'd be nice to get some information on whether the thing is working or not.
Okay, anything else?
Yes, well, can I elaborate on that?
Go ahead. I understand what you said.
Yeah, well, there have been occasions where the cameras, where I've had things stolen, my bicycle was stolen. The camera either didn't record it or wasn't working, so other people have said that the cameras are not working.
Okay.
So be nice to get some.
You want to know if they're working, yes.
Yeah. There's a lot of work that I think is going to be subject to some kind of review, like the laundry room flooring replacement development wide. I don't know whether that's the sort of thing that's needed. This also, the Chamber Street asphalt paving needs some design oversight because there's something planned for twenty twenty-five, hundred forty-seven thousand, and then more on twenty twenty-six, two hundred and twenty-four thousand. So it'd be nice to get an idea of what that is about. Also, they can consider some design features like the permeability of it too, and that's become an issue with floodwater and all all kinds of things that's going on regarding the hydrology study, which would be nice to factor those things into our plans. There's there's vague references to urgent projects that require excess spending in one and two in year one and two. Be nice to know what they are. There's upgrades, where you've referred to upgrading and sustainability improvements. That would be great to have some elaboration on it. Especially, I have to note that this project here, this five chamber street was characterized as an upgrade. The air conditioning here is the same old stuff. If we'd upgraded it, would have been a mini split system, we could demonstrate, you know, a more progressive, a more, a better system instead of the same old stuff, which is making noise. All the time. Again, there's a reference to changes in the housing authorities from previous capital improvement plans. You've added multiple projects. And I I don't see them.
Can I suggest an approach for you? I guess I I have a sense that when I asked our executive director that maybe to comment on the ones they did the made today, that maybe the same com, since we are about to have a recognized tenants association after a lot of work by people in this room, thank you very much, and you know what it hasn't happened, you said, when you were talking to Marlene's questions, and we have much more, you know, a lot of more questions is we haven't had that in place. What would you recommend is the best way to, you know, kind of get the tenants association leadership up to speed?
So I I would love to have a meeting with them. I'd come here and have a meeting with you so that you can understand what these documents means. And talk to you more about all the dynamics that go into it.
And
better understanding.
Ross asked about the schedule. Ross asked about the schedule is when do we have to get this submitted if we're going to stay in on time?
Well, we're going to prove it tonight.
Yeah.
And certainly can add comments to the plan after it's proven.
Okay.
We did not have residents association on the board at the time of this development of this stuff.
And it's due now, to submit, yeah.
So we won't be on time.
So let's be, can we be on time in the submission of the report? I would still see if we have any more comments tonight. But then also schedule that meeting sometime in the near future.
Absolutely, and I can draft up the comments that are happening now.
Yeah.
And you can go with that as well, making sure that what I'm submitting.
Covers those comments, yeah. Okay, great. How does that sound to you, Ross?
Sounds good.
All right, super.
Any opportunity to work together.
It is a wonderful thing that you have gotten to the step of having, you know, your bylaws approved and now before us, and I'm looking forward myself as an individual commissioner and heartily voting to recognize the new tenants association because I think it's really an incredibly valuable tool in my experience for communication. So, great, let me turn Calpana.
Hey, I have a few more things.
Well, can you bring it up at this meeting? That it's going to be scheduled? I'm sorry, you are interrupting, I'm, you know, I'm sorry, you are interrupting, okay, you you are on the agenda, it's coming. It's hang in there, we're almost there. We'll we'll take it out of order, okay? Okay, so how about that? But and then and then you can provide all these comments to Cheryl, once you have a chance of understanding the plan, which I guess the other officers in the tenants association haven't had a chance, or at least this officer, the tenants association hasn't had a chance to do it, and one of the officers can't attend until six. So let me just, in the interest of moving things along, suggest that we do that, Ross, is that okay?
Sure.
Okay, great. Calpana, are you, your hand went down. Okay, great. Kalpana, um, are you, your hand went down. Um, do you still have some comments? I've just. Um, activated your microphone here. Kalpana, do you have any comments at this point?
Good evening, everybody.
We can hear you.
Thank you.
Go ahead.
I do not have, I have, do not have seen the capital plan or annual plan. Uh, my request is to have the hard copy in a, a, a bigger font. In a single page. To provide me. With that, I'm requesting to have a. Residents and the executive director meeting with the maintenance of our main person. Because recently I am not following, so I don't know the name of the person. Uh, but um, whatever the hearing you have. Um, I believe that uh, we have no clear idea. And uh, uh, af- uh, as soon as you have passed about the development. And I believe that none of the uh, residents and executive director had a meeting. Where the residents can express without having the time slot. As well as other people uh, making impatient. That is my request. Thank you very much.
Thank you so much. Um, any comments, Cheryl? No comments on that? Anybody else have any comments? Uh, I don't see any other hands uh, raised at this point in time. Um. And um. So, I think we're at the end. Do, I'm going to go around to the commissioners. Um, and I, Janice, can I start with you as our resident commissioner? Do you have any? Comments to bring up, you know, as part of the public hearing as opposed to our discussion? Um, you know, afterwards and possible vote. You're on mute, I, by the way.
Sorry, no, uh, I don't have any comments right now.
Okay, great. Um. And um. Penny and Ed.
I have no comment.
And Jim.
It was a well thought out plan.
Okay, super. Um, then can I hear a motion to close the public hearing at this point?
So move?
Do I hear a second?
Second.
We should call the roll again. Rich Foster says aye.
Jim Flanagan says aye.
And Schreiber votes aye.
Penny Kirk votes aye.
Janice Penne votes aye.
And the public hearing is closed. Thank you very much. Uh, what are our next steps here, Cheryl?
We need to.
You have to speak up because of our air conditioner.
We need to approve the plan so that we can submit it to E O H L C um, and we'll be on schedule for doing it. So we can prove the plan with the caveat of knowing that additional time it's forthcoming to be added to the plan.
Great, so that's super and try to get the resident meeting scheduled and not the resident. It's not just a, it's our very first.
Yeah.
Meeting with the, our. Hey, yeah, we have to get the acronym remembered, right? Yeah, alright, so.
I so moved that we go forward.
With this uh, annual plan, uh, this uh, five year, this uh, twenty twenty-five annual plan. Thank you, Janice. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second from Penny Kirk. Any further discussion from the board? Very nothing. I will call the roll. Rich Foster votes aye.
Jim Flanagan votes aye.
And Schreiber votes aye.
Penny Kirk votes aye.
Janice Penne votes aye.
Great, so we will go um, proceed to um, two sort of slightly out of order agenda items. Um, first, I'd like to invite our guests. Maybe you can come up to the table here. And um, my able technical assistants here is going to see if we can get your presentation. Up because I didn't, I didn't, didn't, I don't have two old fashioned USB ports. I only have one, you know, so I didn't think of that, so. Um, you should have screen share capability, Dems.
Do. And enable the sharing.
I did, I still might did already. And, let's see, um. Why isn't it doing that here? Interesting. I know where did they hide these things all over the damn thing and. You remember where, and it, it used to be right and they shared screen sharing screen here.
Got B maybe?
Hmm?
But got B?
Yeah, I didn't hear. More. Has to start video. I guess maybe that's. What you gotta do with that. It's not recognizing you as a. Still. They moved the permissions somewhere advanced, screen sharing. Silly, why did they put here? I can share my screen, but that doesn't do any good. It do, it used to be right on the, you know, allow panelists to square screens. I mean, it's moved here. Enable reactions, mute panels on entry.
If that, you could make me host.
Yeah, I think I'm about to do the, the nuke approach. You're gonna make you, make the host. Here you go. Alright, you now are officially a host.
Whatever his presentation is. Get it on the screen.
I'll have to look that up. They, you know, they redesigned the interface to make it more convenient and for people who don't use it every day like me, it's like. Yeah, we see yours slide. You need to maybe expand.
Yeah.
Fill the screen there. Perfect. Alright, we're good. Alright, so let me turn the floor over to you, um, Mike and Betsy. Go ahead. And speak up. As you know, we've got the, the site and the air conditioner here.
Alright, well, thank you, everyone. That good?
Yep.
Um, appreciate the invite to be here tonight with you all. Uh, for those who have not had a chance to meet us, uh, my name is Mike Mous. I'm the executive director of Affordable Housing Services Collaborative. Um, I'll get into who we are in a second, just switch page. Um, and, and I'll let Betsy introduce herself, but this is sort of the team uh, that was in the proposal that we submitted to the housing authority. Um, and, and we were selected. So again, I'm Mike Mous, Betsy Collins, P B Properties here. And these, these are some of the other folks that are not in the room with us tonight. Um, they were part of our interview, but they're going to collectively be part of our development team that we're going to work with. Um, to make. The renovation of the, the Linden site happen. Um, and so we have our, our legal team at Nixon P V D. Um, our relocation specialist and advisors from housing to home. A general contractor, N E I general contracting. A management company, also P V D properties and P V D resident services, a division of P V D properties. And um, the architect is the architectural team that um, the housing authorities have been working with all along, D H plus A. Betsy and I met with Dan Chen, who's on the slide here, uh, as part of our response to the R F B. And uh, we had great discussion with him and we think that uh, will be a good collaboration to continue to work on. Uh, the plans that his firms advanced to this date. And it would be highly advantageous to keep that, that plan moving forward. So a little background on affordable, um, as I call it for short, or A H S A. Uh, we were founded in two thousand one uh, by Edward A. Fisher, who's also the founder of P V D properties, but much earlier in nineteen seventy-six. We've, although we're not legally affiliated with P V D properties, we are strategically affiliated. We've worked with them for over twenty-three years on nineteen different uh, communities together. Um, and so the housing authorities selected us as a team, so therefore the housing third will have one joint venture partner. Which is an entity that we've created called the H S E, P V D developer, L L C. Uh, this is a little bit, again, just about our approach is terms of how we collaborate. Um, and uh. With that, I'll turn it over to Betsy to talk a little bit about. Financing plans and, so do you want, you want to click yourself?
Oh, I don't know. I might let you click. I'm just gonna, I'm, I'm more of an ad lib person. Uh, I'm Betsy Collins. I'm the vice president of development with P V D properties. As Mike mentioned, P V D properties um, is also a management company. That is our core business. And um, we were founded in nineteen seventy-six, nineteen, yeah, nineteen seventy-six. Um, and we currently manage about sixteen thousand units in Massachusetts. Um, we have a, and I'll get into more of that, um, but primarily most of them are affordable. And our development activity and certainly our collaboration with Mike's organization is really focused on. Um, developing affordable housing that draws upon our management experience. It's, you know, it's providing a quality um, design. It's providing space for investment for resident amenities. Um, and also um, we build into our developments resident service component. So we're not trying to be the biggest developers in the, in New England, um, but we are trying to do. Special projects that we think really tailor back to that experience. Um. Really, we're excited when we saw the R F P amount of. Pre-development. Um, lot of work should be acknowledged and, and has been accomplished by this project. And so we looked at it and said, geez, this is, you know, exactly the kind of housing we do. This is the, we think we can complement. And bring to the, the project the services that were asked for in the R F P. Primarily, um, and certainly my, my primary um, role is financing. Um. And we felt that this project had to evaluate really the best way to get the project funded. And when I say that, there's a lot of funding that's implemented locally, but how do we get the other pieces and how do we get primarily the state? And the investors who will really round out the rest of the, the funding that's going to be needed for the project. So we came up with an approach that we thought would take in, into account really what, what. Funding is available and, and you probably know this from everything in the, in the papers. That Affordable Housing Bill was a major uh, accomplishment by the administration. Um, it's going to take time for that to be put into place. And so we were trying to look at this as how do we get this project funded? It's two phases. How do we look at it from? How many other projects are already in for funding? How far, how can we get in line? And get this project financed. So we took it as we're going to pursue funding for each of the two phases. And we think we have a, a fairly good plan to go into the funding round later this, this fall. And um, try to get the, the state to. Perhaps fund it first time in, or at least put it in line to get funding um, this, as, as, you know, as they review the project. If we don't make it the first time, which a lot of projects don't, to be competitive with the second project. Um, so that was an awful lot of what we thought was important to do. And um, I'll just touch on the, and some of the other approach. We felt that we were coming into a project that was so far advanced, but with all of our projects that, you know, we also feel that we are a partner with the local. Uh, our local development partner in this case, the housing authority. And so we're really a fifty fifty partner. We're not looking to, to make decisions in a vacuum. We're not looking, we're looking to have. To complement everything that's been done, not to say this is the, it's our way or it doesn't, not gonna work. So we really are trying to say that we want to be a partner and we want to get up to speed and, and then we help keep the momentum that's been generated.
So I don't know if we want to get too far down.
I don't, I think we could skip this one, yeah.
Um, but in terms of, again, we can talk a little bit about housing to home and we're going to be having a resident meeting as you saw tonight, the flyers have gone out. Next, um.
Thursday.
Next Thursday, April twenty-six. I knew it was the twenty-sixth, I think. Um, to talk a little bit about the process because we will be applying for funding. Before you apply for funding, it's a requirement that you put together a general information notice. The general information notice or the rad information notice has very specific information in there that. HUD wants you to include. But it can also be a little confusing and wordy, so we want to make sure that we have a meeting to discuss. What that means. And to give folks the timeline, our best guess as to. When our applications will go in, when we think things will get funded, when we think we'll be able to start, start. So we're just going to kind of lay out and talk with the timeline, so that way everyone's on the same page. Oh, it's a public process. There's nothing to hide. It's very straightforward. And we just want to start that process, start that conversation with everyone next week. So hopefully we get that notice and you, you can let your neighbors know. That would be great. We look forward to uh, to meeting with everyone.
Those notices for the um, the HUD notices will be um. Delivered and, and, and presented to the residents of the Linden Street, the Linden Street community. But we also will be available just to, to talk further with the campus as, as a whole. Um, and I will mention also that our relocation specialist housing to home, we've done a number of projects with them. Um. Large projects, seniors, families. Um, they're very good at what they do. They have had a lot of experience, so they know all the issues that come up. And it'll be great opportunity for the lease, Katie Perkins, or the president.
And we added a few slides in here just to show our construction companies' experience to their level of uh, commitment. That they have, you know, the number of projects that they've completed. And the number of units that they've done over the years, twenty-six years of experience. So. As I mentioned, we have a really great team that's going to be able to put this all together for everyone. Um, that's already mentioned, resident services. Talk a little bit about the management. This is sort of a little bit more on the management side in terms of what we, we hope to provide and to work with the housing authority. Um, to sort of, again, augment some of the onsite management that you're already doing to collaborate with some of that, so. Work together on that approach to, to. So we're, we're happy to be here tonight to introduce ourselves to the board members who we were able to meet, to some of the residents who we haven't met. I know we went to T Truck uh, last week, was it?
And then.
And we did meet like one or two residents uh, that were here tonight. Um, but it's nice to meet you and very met Helen on the committee. So we're here. If you have any questions, we're happy to answer.
So we're, the way we're going to do this, since we've got this resident meeting scheduled on the twenty-sixth, is that any resident meeting. Questions, the resident questions, we should, you know, provide ample time to get into whatever those details are. So the. Question and answer is really directed to you, uh, Penny and Ed and Janice, the, the three commissioners that weren't. As directly involved in the uh, proposal evaluation process. Do you have any questions or comments you want to offer to our new leadership here that's come on board? Go ahead, Penny.
Uh, you mentioned various staffing. Uh. Positions. Would you be hiring different people than we already have or? Um, considering keeping on the people who, who fill those positions now?
I think the, the, on the surface at the beginning, I think the approach would be, we have an awful lot of third-party vendors. That do a lot of things that your staff does, you know, as simple things as, as snow plowing, um, you know, other maintenance items. I think we would like to keep them in your um. In your um, as, under the housing authority. So you also have the flexibility of having staff that can go to different, meet, meet different needs, but. Contracting with you to provide the services will still allow you to keep the same manpower. So we will have folks on site. But they'll also be looking to not duplicate services and to the extent we can, try to get more stuff to the housing authority and really as a contractor.
Other questions? Any, then, uh, Janice, how about yourself?
Yeah, I, I, I want her to elaborate, excuse me, elaborate a little bit more on. Is she, is she on board? is she, is she on board with keeping our, our staff or that, that's a yes or no question.
Well, I think they won't work for us directly. They'll continue to work for the housing authority. We would just simply, as Betsy said, we would look to enter into a contract with the housing authority to provide some of the services they're already providing on the site. So I think
Okay.
That's sort of arrangement.
That answers my question. Thank you.
Yeah.
Anything else?
Well, great. Um, thank you so much for coming tonight. Um, you're well, of course, welcome to stay the rest of the night. Our very interesting meeting approving checks and warrant and the stuff and policies. But if you have to go, please do. Um, if everything's being recorded, so you can catch it later. You know, when you're, you know, whatever, cleaning garage or something, you know, uh.
Multi-processing.
Thank you very much for coming tonight. Appreciate it.
Thank you. Thank you for having us. Appreciate coming.
Thank you.
All right, I'm going to take reclaim host here. We are now the host. Didn't let me make you a co-host. It was another change here. Anyway, we're ready to go to resident input, which we kind of worked around here. Is there any um, further resident input of the day-to-day, week-to-week, month-to-month kind um, that um, if you are on, I see we have an attendee online with a hand raised. Um, that is Sue Beazah. So Sue, um, you, we should be able to hear you. Go ahead. Sue, you, you should.
You can, you can hear me now?
You can, yes.
Okay.
But.
Couple of things. Uh, you know, we had a, a resident advisory board meeting with Cheryl, you know, earlier this week. And uh, there was, there is a notice for the, you know, public comment uh, for October seventeenth. So I did say I'm gonna, you know, get a flyer out to each of the buildings up here. To get them up on the bulletin boards inside. There's a lot of folks just, you know, they're just, they either don't have tech experience or they don't have any tech at all. But anyway, so planning on that. And also I um, I talked to Jessica Reese. We're going to try to have a meeting on Wednesday night at six o'clock with uh, just residents for up here. Because uh, many folks are interested in, you know, the plans for our community room. And I know Cheryl wants to make it a much more comfortable place. And uh, you know, maybe to get some furniture that could be uh, used for various things. And I was able to give her a couple of places to check out. And also, I know residents want to have input because, you know, we live up here and so I thought I would uh, go get some, yeah, yeah, as far as painting. I thought I would go get some paint samples from some of the paint shops around town. And we would do like we did in the past, we would have a dot um, session. You know, putting up the paint samples. And letting people, you know, have their stickers on what they would like to have. You know, things going from like, you know, like a, a warm color to a cool color. And I think that's something I can figure out, you know, with somebody at the, you know, whatever paint, paint store I get to. I'm sure they have ideas on, you know, for, you know, large venue rooms and everything. So I just wanted to let you know. And that's it.
Thank you so much. I don't see anybody else with hands raised, um, attendees here. Uh, any further comment? Residents in the room, go ahead, Ross.
Yeah. This matter of having things in public. I, I spoke with Lori because she's one that wants to clean things up all the time. And then she, one time before, when you're in the middle of a campaign, that I had a bunch of literature there that I was working on posters, flyers and things. And went home for lunch and uh, okay, it was forty-five minutes, but when I came back, everything was cleared out. Now fortunately, it was put in the closet, but still this tension, this need to clean things out. I mean, it extends to uh, landscaping, you know, when they just mow things down and clear things out. I, I asked Greg about it. He actually said something interesting. He said, you got to understand when our guys are doing landscape, yeah, landscaping, they're equipment operators. They're not gardeners. So that was like a, a light bulb went off. Um, he said, our people don't do gardening. They operate equipment. So, but when they operate equipment and they cut everything down, Greg said, he goes, or somebody said that uh, that uh, they cut down things that were obviously weeds. And I mentioned that, well, you cut down the milkweed too, you know, so. And he said, what's milkweed? So I think I mentioned this to um, somebody, but uh, there's a guy uh, who's giving a course. His name was Hawesker or something like that. I believe his either wife or mother, somebody connected with him is uh, was or may still be president of the uh, garden club. Uh, so this guy is giving a course in pruning. And I think for professional development, um, it would be something to consider to have these people um, take a course in uh, to improve their landscaping uh, skills. And it would be great to see, again, this, this matter of having public information here, you know, um, can we talk to, uh, I guess it's the maintenance people or, or somebody that's getting pushing this idea of everything being cleaned up and thrown away all the time or put away so we can't get it. We, we need to talk about that and resolve that as an issue. Like uh, there's been uh, changes in the parking policies. Like to see that in writing, find out what the up-to-date issue is. Smoking policy, I was going through some of the back records and uh, at one point, they announced that um, we have solved the part, the uh, smoking problem that uh, Chambers Street or Linden Chambers Development is now a no-smoking development. That was the big announcement at the time. You couldn't smoke within twenty-five feet of the building.
Just warn you, coming up on your three minutes here.
So it'd be nice to get that clarified, whether we have a smoking policy, what it's going to evolve into and so forth. Also, the quarry business that came up one time and I thought it was going to be discussed. It may have been discussed. I don't know. But it's been several months now. We've never gotten back to um, the criminal offenders' records. Lawn, lawn and garden policy, video surveillance. Again, is that working or not? We don't know.
And I'm sorry, um, that's it. Thank you so much. Great. I don't see, Sue, your hand went back up. Do you still have something to say or did I?
I always have something to say.
Okay, great.
Okay, but this is just a little bit more on the humorous side and, and it had to do with landscaping. As uh, Penny and Ed know, uh, up on Summit. It was that little uh, grassy area in the middle of the street. And the guys were doing, you know, they were finally, you know, cutting down the grass and everything. And lo and behold, there is a plaque on that stone up there. And here I am thinking it was maybe a veteran or something, but it was nineteen forty-six to nineteen fifty-three, the very first chair of the Needham Housing Authority Board of Commissioners.
Chairman Mosley, he was the one uh, who built the, the, the High Rock Estates original thing. And that was a a great thing where they added eighty units of of uh, housing for two-bedroom and three-bedroom that for veteran, returning veterans and all uh, deeply affordable housing. And he's, he's, he was the first. He was the person who now we're looking at them saying, boy, we really need to get to a project to uh, tear them down and predevelop them here fifty or sixty or seventy years later. So yes, that is, I'm so glad you found the um, the stone there.
Well, believe me, I, I don't, I don't think anybody else's name needs to be put on a rock. But anyway.
Well, the, there is a stone someplace that I haven't been able to find with Ralph Chambers um, name on it. Who was in her, a chair, the chair, great chairman and the board and the executive director who created Linden Street in two projects, you know, there were two, you know. And then they did Chambers Street and added a hundred and fifty-two units for senior housing between nineteen fifty-seven and nineteen seventy-two. And I, I think he's a hero as well, from my point of view. Maybe I'm just biased because I'm a chairman trying to do the same thing here, but.
I couldn't, I couldn't find this guy. I thought he was maybe a veteran, you know.
And he, no, he's not a veteran. The, the streets in High Rock Estates are named after the veteran heroes. So do some Googling on those names and you'll find that they were very serious World War Two hero, hero. So okay, we're going to move along. Thank you so much, Sue.
Okay.
You got some comment? Okay, go ahead.
Um, I'm very glad to hear that the money, I believe, has been appropriated for the driveway repairs, which of course are desperately needed for the condition, unsafe condition, the driveways again. I would just like to suggest, well, it's more than a suggestion. I really feel that they should, whoever, I mean, I don't know if the budget has already been approved and it's a set amount of money. But they should seriously consider having speed bumps, a couple of speed bumps placed uh, in the parking lot, especially um, around the corner or the curve that goes into Chambers Street. Uh, people's speed on a regular basis. It's not really the residents. It is delivery, people that are visiting, people that are delivering, including large trucks, FedEx, yes, Amazon, other delivery people, also visitors um, and other um, people that are working for one capacity or another for the tenants that have their own private vehicles. And this happens on a daily basis. It's like a speed, a, a speed lane. I mean, people are really going around that corner and speeding around. It is danger to people walking and driving. So I hope that they will consider putting in uh, at least two sets of speed bumps to protect the, the lives of the people that live here, that walk and drive here. It's a serious issue. Uh, and also hopefully at some point, uh, the issues with the sidewalks and the curving and sidewalks and the entry steps to each of the individual buildings can be at least repaired so that they are not in a dangerous, uh, you know, they're crumbling, especially the entryways. At least some sort of repair to make that safe. And then that includes all of the sidewalks, but at least in, in chambers. And I'm not sure, I think Linden, well, now that Linden's going to be developed, I guess that point is moved. But uh, in reference to chambers, several, I mean, there have been more, there have been several individuals that have fallen. And it's not because they have a medical condition or there's anything wrong with them. It's because the sidewalks here are not safe. Okay, um, and then um, one other issue.
Got about a minute left. No, go ahead.
There should be a notice sent for non-emergency water shut-offs. This is something that's been brought to my attention by people that live in chambers and windows. That water, I understand there are many repairs that have to be made with the piping and the water. It's deplorable. And I hope in the new construction in Linden, which we haven't even discussed, they're going to have all new pipes at town sewer and pipes because it's deplorable. Uh, so the issue is with the uh, yeah, the emergency, you know, this is for routine maintenance. I know they have to do it, but if you can't give ten, twenty-four hour notice, which I believe is the, the rule of the law, then at least give them a couple of hours notice. People could be in the shower, people could be cooking their meals. And then all of a sudden, they're in the shower and the water, so no notice at all. So even if it's, you know, it's not, it's routine maintenance, even if it is approached as an emergency level. You have to, there, there must be a way that they can give tenants um, notice at least a couple of hours notice.
That's your time is up. Is it, you got anything else?
Air, I'm making.
No, 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 make it, we got it.
Uh, you take it seriously.
Checking to see if we have anything else.
Thank you. I appreciate that. Thirty-eight thousand dollars was spent on the community.
Quickly though.
There are no screens.
Just give us the headlines. Okay, yes. Okay, great.
Screens. There's also a fire.
Super. Thank you. Um, Cheryl, any comments?
Yep.
Okay, all right. It, don't we, we do provide notice when we know it's not an emergency or a water shut-off, right? Okay, let's, let's look at, let's, yeah, you're a resident, you get comment too.
Um, maybe it applies the mobile call limits. That's a good point about the water.
Yeah.
If they do a robo-call, you have it's emergency. Say, we have an emergency, the water is being shut off. Back on, da-da-da-da, I want to retake. That would be a little heads up, they utilize the network.
Okay, so um, Cheryl's made a note and is going to look into it because I, I think, you know, it's reasonable if it's a routine or scheduled maintenance thing, then obviously notice should be provided in advance. If it's emergency, that's a great idea, you know, these put as well. We do have that. So. All right, let's move on to our rest of our agenda, which is still long. So thank you, commissioners, for sticking out um, through all of this. Um, we are now back to the regular schedule, which means we are our bill schedule and check warrant, right? Have I got, have we got there yet?
Yes.
Agenda item A, okay. So uh, in your packet is a very impressive-sized bill schedule and check warrant, maybe the largest one I have remember seeing in a few years here of nine hundred and twenty-nine thousand, five hundred and twenty-five dollars and fifty-three cents for the Needham Housing Authority. Cheryl, do you want to comment on what's going on there before we take questions within the commissioners?
So the warrant includes our um, payments to our landlords, one hundred and seventy-eight thousand ninety-nine dollars, section eight.
Okay.
Hundred and eighteen landlords that have been paid this month. Uh, we have a payroll eighty-nine thousand, five hundred and eighty-six dollars and twenty-seven cents. And we also have an AP role as well, which is um, a total of five hundred and eighty, seven hundred and sixty-three thousand and fifty-one cents. Now, that AP role includes our payment to uh, uh, roof contractors, JJS Universal.
Uh, of course.
So it includes, that big amount includes that um, that project. That job is completed. You voted um, substantial completion at your last meeting.
Four three hundred thousand right there, right? Yeah, okay.
It's still under the uh, capital fund dollar amount for that project, but um, paid in full. So that's um, that's your um, that's your warrant, which includes section eight um, landlord payments, payroll and accounts payable. Boy, total of nine hundred and twenty-nine, five hundred and twenty-five hundred thousand and fifty-three cents.
Commissioner, questions? Do we have any? Looking around, no questions. Can I have a motion to um, approve uh, the monthly NHA bill schedule check warrant of nine hundred and twenty-nine thousand, five hundred and twenty-five dollars and fifty-three cents? So moved by Commissioner Flanagan. Do I have a second? Second from uh, Janice Bennett. Uh, hearing no further questions or comments, I will call the roll. Reg Foster votes aye.
Jim Flanagan votes aye.
Ed Schindler votes aye.
Penny Kirk votes aye.
Janice Bennett votes aye.
And that is approved five to nothing. All right, we have the High Rock Homes LLC bill sched, schedule and check warrant of forty-two thousand and twenty-four dollars and twenty-four cents of all twos and fours. What does that mean?
Selecting nothing, we should play it in the lottery.
Play it in the lottery tonight is what I think that means, yeah. Is it, am I the only one who noticed that? Um, maybe.
Well, they say when it's a hard number, something's off.
So um, anyway, um, anything you want to call our attention to in that um, bill check warrant?
No, there, there were some smart payments. We have eight, eight base, ten eight units and that payments are fifty-six thousand, it's not included in the warrant. The warrant consists of the um, accounts payable um, checks for forty-two thousand twenty-four dollars and twenty-four cents.
Great, um. Any questions from the commissioners? Hearing none, I will call the roll again. Uh, Reg Foster votes aye. to approve that. I should say it all out, the forty-two thousand oh twenty-four and twenty-four cents. Bill check warrant for HRH LLC. Reg Foster votes aye.
Jim Flanagan votes aye.
Ed Schidler votes aye.
Penny Kirk votes aye.
Janice Bennett votes aye.
You know, I'm getting tired. Did I, didn't get a motion second tonight. I most make the motions.
Yeah, I, I was gonna say something, but.
Been a long week. Those, those people presented to us earlier, this to, you know, Betsy and Mike have been wearing me out here. I'm just trying to make it to Friday without falling apart. Okay. Onward, so keep an eye on me, Cheryl here. We're on agenda item B, uh, review and approve board meeting minutes. Our first minutes are the minutes of uh, our last board meeting, monthly board meeting on, uh, August fifteenth, twenty twenty-four. Have the commissioners had a chance to see if there are any typos or things goes in there? Any comments?
The penny report is coming up.
I've got one, but it's for the September minutes.
Okay, we're getting there. All right, so I hear, and I just note that that's the, um, the minutes where we approve the adjustments to the Cambridge Housing Authority, um, uh, engagement and, uh, it's all documented in there and, uh, so we got that all caught up. Um, so I will make a motion that we approve those minutes.
I second.
Seconded by, um, Janice Bennett, uh, Reg Foster votes aye.
Jim Flanagan votes aye.
Ed Schidler votes aye.
Penny Kirk aye.
Janice Bennett votes aye.
Okay, and we now have B two, which is the special board meeting. Um, that was held to receive the propositional evaluation committee report and review it. And eventually appointed and awarded the engagement, uh, of the Linden Street redevelopment project, um, uh, the engagement to be our co-developer to AHSC Peabody Development LLC. So, um, any, Patty, you said you had a, um.
I did, okay. There were two, but one isn't important, but this one I think is probably important for the minutes. Page four, um, it, the, the first vote there, motion to vote. It says that the vote was unanimous, but you do not mention your name, Reg.
Oh, okay. Um, let me get.
That's a typo.
Uh, you know, it's a typo, yeah, yes. Let me, you learn the minutes here, what numbers it, uh. For.
Those are.
Oh, those came separately, yeah, thank you. Can you, um, we need to make those corrections because we need to send those out tomorrow. Um, thank you. I actually have a copy of it too. I just, uh, wasn't looking for the right folder here. Let me take your, steal your copy. Page four.
That, that was a good find, Penny. No, we could have been refused for something like that.
Penny, say it again, the corrections?
It says, it's the page four of those minutes, um, at the very top. The first motion to vote, Chair Foster called the roll for commissioners in favor of this motion, but you did not mention that you voted.
Great, thank you. Okay, and then, and you have a second minor one?
I can't remember what it was.
Not important, are they? Right, uh, with no other corrections, um, I will call the roll to, uh, I will make a motion to approve these minutes.
Second.
Second by Jim Flanagan. Uh, Reg Foster votes aye.
Jim Flanagan votes aye.
Ed Schidler votes aye.
Penny Kirk votes aye.
Janice Bennett votes aye.
Thank you, and, um, I just wanted to comment that, um, uh, Cheryl deputized me to help write the minutes because of the nature of the subject matters, which I haven't done for a long time. And I just want to say how much I appreciate Cheryl doing it when she has the time to do it. And next time she asks me to do that, I may turn to you, Penny, and you know, because it was, uh, it was reminded me of how grateful we are that one of Cheryl's supreme skills is writing great minutes here, so. Okay, we're gonna move on to the next agenda item.
And I'll, I'll say that.
Yeah, great. And, uh, that is um, uh, agenda item C, which we've already done, which is the introduction to our developer partner. So we will go to agenda item D, our local tenant organization recognition. Cheryl, you've got the floor.
Okay, so you have a memo in your packet from me, um, on, well, asking for your consideration for recognition of the Linden Chambers Resident Association. And consideration of the tenant participation policy. Um, so we all know that it's so important to have a recognized LTO in place. It just works for the agency. It's, um, I commend, uh, Ross for uh, working hard at this endeavor. I've been with the agency for two years and he's been working on this for two years. So it finally happened. Uh, Mass Union had certified that the elections were, um, democratic. They were democratic, they took place in a democratic process according to the CMR. So we are grateful that that process happened. Now it's time for us to consider after your review, careful review of their bylaws as well as tenant participation policy to recognize the LTO, um, LCRA.
Can I say something?
Sure, go ahead, Jess.
Yeah, Ross, um, I am pretty proud of you. You have taken, um, good care and researching everything you needed to do to become recognized. It's a long process. And, uh, I don't want you to think for one minute that that you overtook the, the time because um, it is a timely, a timely process and, uh, I'm proud of you for doing that and I hope that you will have, uh, a team that supports you. That's the most important thing in running a tenant association, is having a team that supports you. Um, so, good luck.
Thank you, Janice. I, I think we all agree with that. Oh, what's the issue? Yeah, so.
And they've done that.
Um, is there, um, any other comments on the bylaws that we have in front of us here? Uh, before we do a vote on the tenants association, yeah. Um, I have the smallest of nitpicky comments, uh, but I actually think it's quite, it doesn't change anything. Um, but, um, I look at the signatures of the below officers and it doesn't say Ross Donald, I think you're president, you know, comma president. And it doesn't say James Burke, comma, vice president, okay? And remember, this, this document's gonna live for years. It's gonna outlive us, you know, and I think that it's important that people know who the founding officers are that did this, in my opinion. And, and, and so I, I, and then it doesn't say, it says Marlene Costa. Thresher, thank you. And Doreen Moriarty, secretary. So, I, um, if this isn't too much, if, if you could get that original, put the, in your handwriting, and let's make that the official founding in bylaws of the resident, uh, association we're just approving here tonight, yeah.
Yes, it's very important to define the offices going forward, most definitely, otherwise we can't recognize you.
Yeah, so I, I, with the understanding that that document would exist, you know, just as a, it, it really, it's really a formality, you know, it's a, you know, a, a, a minor fix. Are the board comfortable on voting on this tonight?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay. Would, um, I'd like to invite, um, Janice as our tenant commissioner to make the motion.
Okay. As resident commissioner, I make the motion to be in favor of recognizing the Linden Street Chambers ten association, ten residence organization. Well, I don't know how they're presenting themselves.
Lind- Linden Chambers Residents Association is, I think, the official name.
Yeah, okay, that's, that's my, um, recommendation.
I have a motion. Do we have a second from a former tenant and a resident coordinator who has spent many, many years hoping, you know, working on this sort of stuff in the past? Penny, do you have a second? Will you second the motion? Yes, please.
Yes.
All right, great, because I think you earned the spot, both of you. Is there any further discussion?
Um, I would just like to make one.
Sure.
Us, and have a last say, uh, private meeting, like you suggested, ten thousand is Marlene, to bring out additional comments that were not, um, uh, that are told to be also heard.
Absolutely, and we'll talk about it in the very next moment after we vote, okay? All right. So, hearing no further comments from the board, I will call the roll. Reg Foster votes aye.
Jim Flanagan votes aye.
Ed Schidler votes aye.
Penny Kirk votes aye.
Janice Bennett votes aye.
Congratulations, ladies and gentlemen.
Can I make a, to make a comment?
Sure.
My name is Patrick. Uh, thank you, thank you, uh, for your support, um, for your experience, your observations. I think the most important thing for me is, and you brought it up, uh, Janice, is to keep the community involved. Uh, inclusivity, I think is gonna be a byword. Uh, exclusivity is not gonna be tolerated. We're gonna go out of our way to be, uh, public, open, and above toward. I think that's gonna be critical, so.
Ross, our voices must be heard.
For him, uh, for their help, as well as, uh, uh, John Custard.
Super. So, um, I think we, um, the other thing is on the agenda is the, um, but not for a vote tonight.
That's correct.
Is the, can you, uh, talk a little bit more about that and what you'd like the commissioners to consider?
So the tenant participation policy is still in draft on. Um, it gives us guidelines on how to operate into governance amongst ourselves, the NHA and the SCR. Um, so that's still being developed, that policy is being developed. Uh, and I just will bring it back for our October meeting, uh, for fully vetted policy and, um, vote. For your vote at that meeting.
Any other questions for Cheryl on that? Um, I would offer the comment, I, I think that now we have an official tenants associate that's, it's not quite five minutes old, but it is official. Um, if you're gonna have a meeting, you know, we're gonna have a meeting on the comments on the twenty-five, fiscal twenty-five plan. But if you could add, um, comments on this policy, draft policy, because I think when we, when the board, bring those comments from the tenants organization back as part of the, what we are looking at next month. Um, and it may be that you think it's totally fine, it may be that you think you have some improvements you can make to it. Um, we'll find out. And, um, so, is that okay?
That's fine.
Great, okay. I think we can move on now to our executive director's report, um, with the usual, it's up to eleven things here.
Yeah, so, uh.
Where do you get Cheryl here?
So the first one is the, um, financial report from our fee accountant, um, Melanie Sean Robalon. Um, and, uh, we have that, that report attached. There were some questions from Commissioner Schidler on, um, um, operating revenue. Um, and I'd like to address those questions if I could.
Go ahead.
So, um, Commissioner Schidler asked about, uh, the operating rev expenses um, for, uh, our six-six-seven program, which is identified by four hundred dash one. And that it appears to be over budgeted by, um, sixty-nine thousand five hundred and fourteen dollars. Um, and, and yes, it, it, we, we have a lot of operating expenses. Um, our fee accounting has advised me that, that subsidy is higher than usual. It results in higher, um, the overspend- expenditure results in a high utility cost. Um, particularly our water bill. A water bill is astronomical. Um, and so my, um, financial specialist and I are aware of these high water bills. Something is not right. There might, must be a leaky toilet somewhere. But we are aware of the costs that is eating up our expenses. The thing about.
Oh, can I intervene for a minute?
Can I please finish?
Yes.
So, so the thing that happens with the state is that we, even though we're overspent, we get that money back. They do give it back to us um, in the state program. So if we're going over by sixty-nine or more, they will give us some money that we use to overspend that, uh, line item. Um, so that's what I wanted to come, finish, Janice, if you wanted to add.
Yeah, I, I just, I just wanted to say something. I see residents inviting people over to wash their cars. I don't even, I, I think I've washed my car maybe I don't know, ten times in twenty-five years with, with Housing Authority water, but when I see a resident inviting people over to wash their cars, it really pisses me off and I think it's I, I was asked to probably report it, but I don't want to be a petty person, but I'm, I'm also on the Needham, uh, Mass page and, um, I know how, um, the water bills have been inconsistent and, and, and they, uh, for some reason, maybe have revamped their systems and people were getting astronomical bills. So I wasn't sure which way to go, not knowing whether, um, the bills were right or not, but you know, maybe you, you should send something out that, you know, you can't invite people over to wash their cars and, and them, them leave. I mean, I've seen it uh, three, four times right in my own parking lot and, um, sometimes people do that, um, as a business. Um, like a home business off the table, you know, whereas they, they do that, so.
So, um, let's, let's say, focus on the comments too on the monthly financial report. Is there anything else you want to talk to?
That order, um, um, line, what I'm referring to right now, Janice, is the state program, the four hundred dash one, our, our state subsidy. And, and, and the water, um, the, uh, water issue is really high in that line item for the state. It's also high for federal as well. And we may, that may be the case, Janice, in terms of, um, people washing cars. We've had a couple of folks who have, we've come to our attention that has had above ground swimming pools.
Hmm.
So, you know. Yeah, so that's the federal program where we, where we discovered that, um, that issue. Um, but the overspend- expenditure does relate to, uh, our utility costs. Um, I don't know if Commissioner Shillett, you wanted to add to that?
Ed, do you have any, uh, questions you want to throw in the pot here?
Yeah. If Cheryl, if I understood you correctly, sixty-nine thousand five hundred and fourteen dollars was, uh, through June, is that correct?
Yeah, he actually is referring to the June, um, because, uh, this, the June, um, budget, because the August one hasn't closed out yet. So he's really, his costs are relative to June, yes, sir.
Yeah. Um, what I did was a summary of our, our two biggest units, meaning, uh, Linden Chambers and Cook Seabed. And through June, uh, the, uh, budget was overspent by between the two units, one hundred and thirteen thousand three hundred and thirty-five dollars. Now, including July, the combined o- overspending between Linden Chambers and Cook Seabeds was down to eighty thousand dollars. So at least the overspending is certainly heading in the right direction.
Are we talking about water expenditures?
No, I'm talking about total, total.
Total expenditures, okay.
I had sent out a, a, uh, summary report to all of board members. And, uh, apparently it wasn't observed. And uh apparently it wasn't observed. Anyway, uh through July, our budget spending is in excess of eighty thousand four hundred and seventeen dollars for Linden Chambers and Cook Seabeds. A big chunk of that, yes, was an increase in water bill. And as I understand it, the town was not issuing correct water bills through like, I believe, the month of June. And there was also an additional um uh expense added to covering uh stormwater. And uh I believe the July bill caught up. Um, what, what had been going incorrectly was, was I believe a, a change in software that was, was causing the billing issues. So we got a tremendous water bill through, you know, what would include through July, so. Uh Cheryl's observation there is completely correct. But I do have another question. What is involved with sundry administrative expenses? What's in that expense category?
Oh, uh at the top of my head, I could not, I know what it is, but I can't pull it out of my brain. Um, can I get back to you? And you know, with that, the system specifically?
Yes, please. Uh, I had also requested uh in the management unit, there was a uh tremendous consulting bill, three hundred thousand dollars. Is that only for uh Cambridge Housing Consultant or, or, I'm sorry, let me rephrase that. Is that consulting money being spent for the preservation reconstruction initiative?
Uh, so the three hundred thousand dollars that you're referring to are the um the invoices that we paid to BH plus A. It comes from the one point two five million opera funding that our representative Garlic has earmarked for us. We will need to do a general entry to make sure that that money is um identified correctly. But it's not, it's, it's from the management account, but it's not from the management account. It is coming from the one point two five million.
So it is the, the PRI initiative?
It is the archite- uh invoices to BH plus A for Linden Chambers.
Yeah, so that's.
And there, there was a big, big catch-up there where the state had, was preventing us from billing this stuff, you know, of, of.
Yeah, there was um, the, the state is, is, is redoing their capital hub module. And uh there was glitches in the system that wouldn't allow us to pay these invoices. And it took some, a lot of um back and forth to get that glitch fixed so that we can pay the back invoices to BH plus A.
I think we had a lengthy discussion of that at the last meeting, the explanation. So I wasn't complaining about the amount spent, I just didn't ask. Did it all go for the PRI? And in which cases, I certainly understand.
Yeah, 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 that's all BH plus A. Um, but it it, it's showing up right now in the management account. We have to do some journal entries to make sure it's correctly identified. Because it's coming from the one point two five um proper funding. Same thing with our.
Is all spending for the PRI being run through the management uh account, I guess?
That's correct. We don't, um, everything goes to, it doesn't go against our subsidy. So, yeah, it goes against um our PRI account.
Okay. So I, I can uh offer a couple of comments, having been around here a bit and deciphering the, you know, mystery of these things, because they're not necessarily obvious. Um, one, but first of all, uh what happened with the water wasn't that there was billing errors. They just stopped billing altogether like a year ago. Uh, and because they switched over to a new software system that was going to be new improved. This is the entire town. And, and it, the thing just totally cratered, the, the IT project cratered. And they literally didn't issue any water bills for nearly a year. And they finally got it fixed. And I speak at this as a homeowner, Jim is the same way here, and Cheryl might have gotten something. You, 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 they wound up in billing you for like six or eight months of water usage all at once, like three quarters with the water usage at all at once. And then, and that was just part of it. And then there was another big catch-up bill, the second one came in that just, you know, cratered everybody's budget. So I'm sure we're seeing that effect um on that one. I'm pretty certain that that's the, the reason. And then the second reason is we did get into a huge snafu with DHCD, getting the, in the town and getting the invoices for the PRI paid on time. So that's why there was a huge catch-up expense there. Um, so, and then the other thing is I just want to call everybody's attention to the annual plan. If you turn to page thirty-eight of your packet, if you're ever wondering what mystery, these mystery accounts are for, um, it has a table that's entitled Explanation of Budget Accounts. Okay, by number. So the first one is three-one-one-oh shelter rent. And then the second one is three-one-one-one shelter rent and so forth. That, those, those numbers tie right up into the monthly actual financials we get from Rick Shaw, that, that's the numbering system. And so if you look at sundry expenses, he, he calls it sundry administrative expense, forty-one ninety. You can turn to, it's in nice numerical order, you can turn to page forty. And you can see it's forty-one ninety is administrative other is what they, you know, call there. But that's one in the same thing. And it explains to you what gets to, um, it includes but is not limited to the cost items such as reports, accounting forms, stationary, other office supplies, postage, telephone, yada, 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 yada. Now, if we have, you know, like a big unusual expense there, um, then maybe that's something to be looked at. But I just wanted to call everybody's attention to, you know, that table that you maybe just went, you know, just paged right through, because I, you know, it's, it, it, I find it useful in deciphering the higher characteristics of our monthly report here, so just thought I'd make mention of that. Anything else on the financial reports here?
No, but Reg, thank you uh for clarifying. I was trying to say that in, in a different way, but yeah, because there was a lot of chatter on Needham Mass about the, the water.
Always horrible. I can speak from firsthand experience, you know.
Yeah.
It was not just the Needham Housing Authority budget, it was my family budget was blown out of the water.
But, but also, you know, I, I, I don't think, I don't think the resident should be, you know, exerting their, their purpose.
Yeah, so, so exactly. And so that, th- those comments are still valid. So let's, but I'm just watching the clock here, it's getting to seven o'clock. Monthly, monthly management report, anything, any to call our attention to, anything, questions from the?
Yeah, not too much. It's just your standard.
All right.
Vacancy and work order report.
All right, our next E three, I know that you do want to call the ten, commissioner's attention to the uh twenty-twenty-three audit report, which we finally received from Markcom. It's quite a few months late here. Usually in the spring we get this.
Yeah.
Anything you want to call our attention there too?
Uh, so I think I sent it to you, and I hope I did.
Yes, you did.
The corrective action plan.
It, it's, yeah, well, it's in the packet, yeah.
Well, the audit report is in the packet. However, there's a corrective action plan that goes with the audit report. There's a material weakness that the auditors had found in the report. It's on page, I believe, sixty-six. Oh, I'm sorry, I, I'm quoting that incorrectly.
Page one eighty-eight here with something.
Thank you, thank you, thank you.
Yeah.
Sixty-six of the actual report. Um, uh, and where it states that um six, uh material weakness. It isn't a finding, but they want to, it, it does suggest a corrective action.
For high rock homes, right?
Uh, no, for Needham, this is.
For Needham Housing Authority, okay.
Um, and the material weaknesses are under the condition and con- and context session of that report. Um, it's one eighty-eight in your packet, it's one sixty-six, it's sixty-six of the report. And it explains what the auditor has um determined as a result of the audit. They had identified the following conditions that for which require a corrective action. Of which I did, and I thought I sent that to you under a separate cover.
I don't know if you did.
I may not have, and I apologize.
No.
Um, but the corrective action is how to um identify, how to address those conditions going forward. One of them being that we as an agency make sure that when people separate from the housing authority, that access to housing authority um software is uh deactivated immediately. And that uh staff members have the correct um access to, for what they need and not have it um overemphas- uh emphasized. And then there's the OPED report, there was an adjustment um by calculation error in the OPED head report that the auditors had to make adjustments for. So I will send you the correct, that correct corrective action plan for that um con- context. So that you will know how we will prevent this going forward. It shouldn't come up again in our twenty-twenty-four audit. Okay. And I apologize, I thought I sent it out.
Are there, um, I'm gonna ask a question and make a comment. Are there any other commissioner comments or questions? Number one, that's the question. But the comment is also, in years past, different boards have made different decisions. But we have invited uh our auditor to come to an annual board report, once we've had both the High Rock Homes and the uh NRA and NHA um audits. And of course, we've been waiting, waiting, waiting to get the NHOE audit, just finally came in a, a week ago. Um, and it's really at the discretion of the board. Um, in the years past, when there were no corrective actions noticed, boards have said, no, we're, we're good. And uh often when there has been items like this, boards decide, you know, uh we're sort of the ultimate fiduciary oversight, maybe you should invite Markcom um to come to our next board meeting and explain to us what's happening and, you know, whether the corrective action plan is a good, good, on track and so forth and so on. So um, what's the sense of the board, our board, this board tonight? We have a new board member on my left here and um, and some more experienced board members on, online.
Well, as the resident board commissioner, Ed, I mean, excuse me, Reg, um, let me cough for a minute, sorry. I, I think the, the more informed the board is, the better decisions we make. Especially when it comes to our residents. So I'm all on board for any and all new information that will make us a better board for our residents.
It's the same, it's been common practice, and boards have been before, so I support that.
I, I think I, we have a sense of the Benny and Ed sense of the board that we should invite them into our August meeting, I mean, October meeting. And um, we'll do that. And, and I would just say um, this will give us all an incentive to actually, you know, find an hour or two to just actually read through this thing, because there's a ton of great information in it. Um, particularly in the notes, even more so in the notes than trying to understand the actual in L, you know, the, you know, the financial tables and so forth. Because anything that's an exception, not, not, you know, this kind of exception, but anything that's an oddity or something is out of normal or whatever is commented on in those notes. So the notes tell it all. So we'll put that on the list for next month.
Well, we haven't been on a retreat in a while, Reg. It's gonna take a couple of hours.
Um, well, um, I, how about we just invite them for, for twenty minutes first, and then we think we need a retreat? Not a bad idea, um, you know, in your spare time, our spare time here. Uh, I wouldn't say no. Um, we have a bunch of policies, four, five, six, seven.
We've been working really hard, Reg.
Yeah. This board has done more than any small local housing authority board has ever done. And we found that out during this um proposal process we just went through. You know, we're sort of pretty unique, so. Um, good to be proud, you know, something to be proud of. But uh Cheryl, where, what are we doing with all these policies here?
These policies will be included in our annual plan to HUD.
Mm-hmm.
That's due in October.
Yeah.
As well as our five-year plan to HUD, that's also due in October. The RAB board has been meeting every Monday since May to review the plans. I'm grateful to their comment and their guidance and their advice. Uh, so we thought as a, as a group that we would wait for the October public hearing to vote on these plans to give residents another opportunity to comment, should they want to.
Okay.
And they would comment at that time on the draft policies as outlined here.
Okay, so that's again another gauntlet for the board to, you know, uh read these policies and speak now or for ever hold your peace, right?
What I, what was suggested by a RAB board member is that I send out the policy highlighting the areas that have been changed.
Yes, yeah, that'd be great.
So that will help get through the policy.
Okay. All right, can we move on to HATMA?
So HATMA is um the housing, um, it's a federal program. Housing Opportunity Through Modernization Act of twenty-twenty sixteen, it was voted into law by the Obama administration. And um, housing authorities are required to implement changes in our admissions and continued occupancy policy to include HATMA regulations. Um, it, we are required to inform the board of this guidance that's coming down the pike as well as our residents. Uh, we receive notices daily from HUD on this, and my most recent notice came yesterday um in that um, the um, the PHAs will not be required to come into compliance with section one oh two and one oh four income and asset provisions in the Housing Opportunities Through Modernization Act final rule until uh by January twenty-twenty-five. So they've given us a little bit of extension to update our ACOG to include these changes.
Okay.
So that's great news. We've been going to cha- uh trainings and getting ourselves up to speed and preparing ourselves for what's coming. We will notify our residents. My first line of defense was to notify the board, and now a letter will go out to residents notifying them of these upcoming changes to their lease.
Cheryl, that, that's, that sentence of we've been notified i- in our defense, what are we being defensive about?
Are you being defensive about my first line of defense? In terms of informing everyone of the changes in our admissions and continued occupancy is to inform the board, first and foremost, that we've got a reprieve that, that this is coming and that we have to make changes to our ACOG admissions.
Twenty-twenty-five is around the corner and um.
We don't have to do it by the tw- January twenty-fifth.
Yeah, that, you said that. But I don't think it's, I don't think you have to be in defense of the residents.
Should be proud of what you're doing. Thank you.
Yeah.
Thank you.
All right, um.
Thank you.
Probably closing, let's go ahead. Sorry, Penny, go ahead.
Yeah, about the lease. Um, we've experienced lately that with the death of one of the residents, there's been a lot of uh confusion about how to handle the disposal of the property there. And it, it seems to me there should be some statement in the lease that the upcoming resident makes saying, who is in charge of um that person's property, should that person um die?
Right. And as I mentioned at a previous meeting, you know, we want to protect the liability of the agency, and that's why initially we'd like the tenant to petition the court to become a personal representative of the estate. And that person could then go in and uh remove items from the unit. It is very, it's a very cumbersome, it puts a hardship on most residents. It's a cost, a court cost of a hundred and fifty dollars to the resident to do that, and it takes about thirty days to process. So what I've done in its place is create a So what I've done in its place is creating. A demification statement that the resident will be able to go into the unit but not hold Needham Housing Authority harmless. Should they find something missing and they can't account for it. And also, um, and that's in, that's the immediate um. The immediate plan, but it also needs to be vetted by our attorney as well. Um, so my concern really, I I've had heard some stories that I can't repeat in a public meeting. And my concern really is for the liability to the agency. Um, should be and to to the agency, if we don't have anything in place to. Not only protect the residents, um, to protect their items, but also to protect us for. Um, someone accusing us of doing something wrong.
Yeah, so I think this is important, but with, we'll, we'll.
That's a placeholder.
It's placeholder and and um I just, yes, repeat what I think I said before, which is. It's critical to have this policy in place. So that there's uh you know, guidelines and rules of the road in this situation and and there's a lot of people. Older folks, um, and you know, I'm certainly guilty of this as anybody else. You know, who, it's hard for them to take proactive steps to, that you don't want, you're isn't, you don't want it as sort of a state of denial thing. So this, these policies protect us when we just don't have. Uh a resident who can face up to the fact that we're all mortal and you know, eventually we're all going to. Be headed wherever we go after this here, so um, but not for tonight are we going to discuss it here, so.
Placehold we're gonna continue to.
Any um, so policies, public housing notice twenty four twenty, twenty twenty four oh eight.
So that's the CMR.
Yep.
And that's regarding uh changes to the lease in the state public housing. Our residents have been informed of these changes, that letters have gone out to everyone. Um, changes in the lease of affect just four areas. Uh updating the utility section to reflect changes to the heat deduction schedule. Updating TCA section, update an appliance section. And updating language regarding over income households. Um, we've already um. I I've sent, I've included a copy in your packet of the notice uh for the requirement to the agency to inform residents of this change. And I've included a copy of the. A notice of lease amendment that has been mailed to all one hundred and fifty-two residents of Linden and Chambers. Um, as well as um the lease amendment itself, so. Uh for for new residents coming into the agency. They will have a new lease with this new language and um. Existing residents, when it's time for their annual recertification of income and assets. They will get the lease amendment. But it was voted into law by our governor.
This is an information item for the board.
Just an information so you know what, what, what changes are happening in our state program.
All right.
Thank you.
Fire alarm, fire alarm upgrades.
Fire alarm case, Commissioner Shidler, you had mentioned at the last meeting that the bid, low bidder was very low. And um that low bidder actually withdrew the bid. We have a new low bidder and that's the information that's in place here, so um his. That company's references have been checked and this is for the fire alarm. Uh replacement panel at six eighty-nine, our six eighty-nine group home, fourteen fifteen Great Plain Avenue.
So do we need a vote to approve this new low bidder?
I I don't think so, I think it's really just um informational item. For you, since we knew the change in that process, EO HLC definitely. Moves the capital projects forward for local housing agencies, um they do the bidding, they do the um. You know, they do everything upfront.
Well, that's certainly plenty, is there any other issues uh or updates for the board?
Yes. No.
Amen, move on here. All right, we're on um, we're on the home stretch, I hope, um, we're at status of updates and approvals for the PRI initiative. Um, so I think we've had a lot of updates already on Linden Street redevelopment, um, not gonna repeat any of them. Um, um, just noting that our next big and near nearly last. Big hurdle we have to get through is the uh public hearing at the planning board that kicks off at seven o'clock. Uh next Tuesday, the twenty-fourth, and our teams have been. Working around the clock for the last two or three weeks to get that all through two or three months, actually to get that all teed up. And I think we're ready to do a good job there. It'll probably not end on the twenty-fourth, it will probably be continued. Um, to the next planning board meeting, uh but has a good chance of them ending then getting our. Our approval that we need for the planning board. Um. It's um, the planning board meets at. Five hundred Dedham Ave at the P S A, at the, in the um, the conference room there. And it's also uh online too, if you want to attend that way. And they will accept comments, you know, so it is a public hearing, not just for. You know, us and our residents, but also any, any citizen of Needham who wants to say. You know, I don't want this to happen, or I think the building's too high or whatever, so. Okay, um, Seabeds Cook, um, they are um, see the Cambridge Housing Authority monthly report. I think that didn't get to everybody, Cheryl, is that right?
Not get to.
Okay, so that's another thing that um. Will go out tomorrow, there's a copy for Jim here today, um. But uh so the, what the report says is there's nothing to report. Uh that um, we're now proceeding from fifty percent schematic design to a hundred percent. Schematic design and all is in order, um, so that's what it says. Um, F three Community Preservation Act funding application, so we're, a year has gone by since we last thought about this. A year ago, we were talking about getting five point five million dollars for the Linden Street redevelopment project in town meeting. Voted to approve it, yay team. Um, so now we're looking at, there's still some money available for grant funding. Um, so our consulting teams are thinking about two possible applications that will go in. They've identified some additional funding opportunities for the Seabeds and Cook. Uh modernization project that might um um be something that we take forward. Um, those have been identified because some of the costs have come in more than we expected. And some of the funding is falling short of what we expected, so we may want to re-turn to the. Um, town for some help, um, that's not a final decision yet, I'm just giving a. Uh up, you know, sneak preview here for the board. Um, but um at our next, if we do this at our October board meeting. That's when you will see those preliminary applications, they're fairly short. Coming for the board for approval, because the deadline for submitting the preliminary app, funding application to the town is November first. Again, that's for Seabeds and Cook preservation and modernization. And and just, I'll keep repeating this, the uh Community Preservation Act has language in it. Where you can only use town funds for preservation purposes. But not, not for like putting new kitchens in or modernization, um, not, not allowed, um, so. Uh we also have note that we have a member of the CPA um advisory council.
Steering committee.
Steering committee, Cheryl Gosman is the regional representative at large on that. Steering committee was for many, you, your fourth year on this, two years, feels like four or years. Um, so uh that's, you know, we have uh access right up to the top. Level of the, of the way it's overseen in the Commonwealth here, so we actually have an expert uh on this stuff. Um, the second uh funding application that's under uh consideration is um. This may be a little shocking, but um there is another project called High Rock Estates. Redevelopment that has been on, on hold for now. Um, a- as we all know, there are sixty eight aging antique. Geriatric units, um bungalows, the remaining High Rock Estates bungalows. That, you know, really for, you know, for family housing that really need um work. We're, we're way too busy to think about anything about that right now, but any money that we apply for now. Wouldn't be available till next summer of twenty twenty-five. And what needs to be done is figure out what we are going to do, we have twenty-one contiguous acres. In, you know, the middle of this beautiful High Rock neighborhood, all beautiful houses. Ours are not quite up to the same standard as all the other beautiful houses that are in the neighborhood. And what do we do with that, there's sort of a planning uh thing that needs to be figured out. Um, and so you gotta sort of think a year ahead of time. When, you know, we'll be at the stage where hopefully uh we can start thinking about not doing things, but just trying to figure out what we want to do. And getting the town on board with that, so that's the second application uh concept that's in, in the works here. If there's no comment, I'll just keep chugging through here, um.
I had a comment, Reg.
Yeah, go ahead, go ahead, yes.
Um, you were talking about the Linden Chambers and uh we're coming up for more funding. Um. So you were looking for money, more money from the town. Does that include this, this, the CPA Funding Act? Plus additional money from the town?
Not for, not for Linden Chambers. Because uh Lynn or.
I mean, I, 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 okay, strike chambers.
Okay, not for Linden either, you know, because we did get awarded five point five million from last spring. Which is incredibly generous, no, you know.
Yes, that was, but you said there was no kitchens or bots included, so that money that we're looking for couldn't go. Towards conversions for um cooks and seabeds either, so.
No, what I'm, I, I probably misspoke in my tiredness, let me try it again, so CPA funding. You know, by the, under the act, the Community Preservation Act, cannot be used. For like renovating or modernizing bathrooms. At Seabeds and Cook. It totally separate subject from Linden Street out here. Um, but it can be used for certain things like uh resident safety and uh. Uh systems like uh burglar alarms and um, you know, fire protection and.
Okay, so additives towards the, towards the um development.
For Seabeds and Cook, yes, and and running the numbers on what we want to do and looking at the funding sources. Um, we may need to ask the town to help out a bit more than we did, they've already done here. And so that's what's being considered, it'll make a lot more sense when you read the application, um, and so.
Okay.
That's, that's it, and then um administrative, um, you heard the update. Uh from the Cambridge Housing Authority that our section twenty-two repositioning. Application has been turned in and, and then all of a sudden there was a lawsuit. And and we're getting now rumors from HUD. That they may reject it and and reject all the applications in the country, not just ours. Because of this situation, we still haven't had the official meeting, but I wanted to report. That that me, official meeting is now scheduled for the twenty-third. So Cheryl and I will be there, um, all the hot, you know, hot shot lawyers and, you know, big guns from Cambridge Housing Authority and everything. And we'll have more information, but it may be that they're gonna. It schedule this meeting to tell us that we have to go back to our previous strategy. That we had already approved and submitted an application and gotten the preliminary approval of the application, that's. Called the RAD section eighteen blends. Uh which this board somehow has gotten incredibly educated on all this esoteric stuff uh that we've been talking about the last.
Um, so that's on the twenty-third.
That's on the twenty-third, yeah. Yeah, so next Monday. Um, so we'll, we'll probably, when we, when we do hear something, if. May not, I don't think, know if we'll have a board meeting or we'll need a special board meeting, um. But we will certainly get a communication out on the board, update on that, what we find out at that meeting. Um, so it's heads up on that. Um, PRI budget update, I, you'll see the C. Uh CHA report that they, we've gotten a near final draft of that and they've promised. To give me something that is, you know, completely checked and proofread and and missing numbers have been added and so forth. By tomorrow, um, so we'll see if that happens here. And so uh when that is available for the board at the next board meeting, I'm gonna wanna. Schedule some time to look at the big picture, we haven't done that for three quarters at this point in time, so it's, it's overdue. Um. And that's, that's the report, any, any other? Questions on anybody's mind or comments? Moving on to agenda item G, um, Cook School After Program update, Charles.
So um, Commissioner Shidler submitted a memorandum. Uh, for the mission statement, I think it was, uh, yeah. And um. Uh, so our Kuzbysaf school program, so it's still, we, our, our third person that we hired. Um, has had a family emergency in India. Um, and so we have not been able to open the program. Uh, we've reached out to um our Heather, our pottery artist. Who is going to schedule uh some pottery classes for the students. Um, for um, that will begin in November, November first. We're still negotiating with Northeastern or not no sort of negotiating, but finalizing paperwork. That could potentially get us a work-study student to be our after-school program manager. Um, we are going to open up the program uh in October and high school students will. Um, be on hand to offer tutoring to our students. Babson and Nobles are not available for us this semester and we will reach back out to them for the spring semester. Uh, we've reached out to Olin College and they have given us um a resource called Handshake. I think that's familiar to you Penny, I think you gave it to me a long time ago. And we are going to reach out to them uh to help uh colleges like Olin and perhaps Framingham State. Um, to do some um STEM programming for us and our, uh, for our students. Um, and uh, what else, um. I do have some other unrelated items that I think I could just put out there for now and then we can get into a discussion about Cooks After School. But one of the other uh unrelated items is um Mr. Polansky, I, I always confuse his name with another Polansky. Uh, I'll just say Mr. Polansky, um, uh, our principal born. Has gotten back to our resident service coordinator about a um, a concert at the school. Um, and uh she's very much interested in that happening, perhaps an evening concert. Um, that the PTC will partner or collaborate with us on um getting out, so there's good news there. Um. And I feel like I'm leaving out stuff, but that, that's, that's all I have for now.
Okay, so, um, Ed, um, you sent out the uh email on the nineteenth of August. Um, proposing that we consider or start reconsidering a mission statement. For the after-school program, you've got, should I, you want to take the floor from here?
Sure, the uh, I, I am asking consideration that this or my proposal is. This be limited to the K through six age groups. And the reason for that is. The original uh. Program that was so successful really was limited to the K through six program. And uh I was told by the uh designer of the program that. It, it was, the, the kids felt that it was really something special, that it was their own. So it gave them a spirit of self-success and pride. So it gave them a spirit of self-success and pride. And that's why I'd like to try to, to limit. This missions, uh, policy mission statement, uh Cheryl wanted the policy. Uh. Be relating to the, the, the K through six age group specifically, and then. I am more than happy to support any other suggestions or, or efforts or. Movements to, to do the same thing for the older children. I, I certainly support that. But because it, it was so successful. Uh, and so important to these young, really young kids that. In many cases are considered to be underprivileged. Uh, that they had something that they were really proud of of their own. So that's why I would like to, to make this. Uh. Um, policy mission statement and goal are. And this particular one restricted to the grades K through six. And I would ask consideration that. This uh mission statement be. Be voted on as, as formal policy of, of. Um. Needham Housing Authority.
I would second that.
Yeah, we're not making a motion quite yet. We're discussing it, but go ahead. Uh, you're, you endorse it is what you're saying, uh, Janet.
Yes, yes, and, and it should be a policy. Um. And if we would leave it open for discussion, I, I would. Like to voice my opinion.
Go ahead.
Okay, well, when we first opened this. This program, I, I can remember being there by myself. At forty two with seventeen children. Showing a movie. Uh, getting snacks from the community council. And. It was the first time that we had opened up forty two. And then there was all kinds of problems. Um, I had gotten in a beautiful rug. And. Then the uh, the maintenance department, they. Had shut the heat down, they left the heat off over the weekend and pipes burst and. You know, things went to hell in a handbag. They had to throw the beautiful rug out that. I had, that the kids were sitting on to watch a movie. And I can remember. Cheryl giving me tips. To hire tutors. Um. And I, I did that and. It, it just. It wasn't until Penny came that we had a formal. Um, after school program because she was able to get. Tutors in there. She had the experience. I, I did not, I admit that and um. And, and, and we went forward so quickly. And we. We had a great program. Um. And I would like, really like to see it get back to that. I mean. It, it just hasn't been that way. And I, I have to say, and Ed's, um. I went up there and I monitored the program. There was no reading, there was no. Homework. And um. I was totally, um. Pissed off if. If I can use that term, but. Yeah.
And I think the better way to put it, if I may, is that you totally felt that. We could do better is what you're trying to say.
Oh, so much better. And as it turned out, in speaking with the director, um. Well, well, just let me go back to when we reopened. With Jessica. She made the mistake. Of letting the children into the community room where we would ho- hold meetings and therefore. It was out of control. She did not confine them to the learning space that was allotted to them. So that was out of control. And Steve Meredith hired her. And he made her an employee where, in fact, prior to that. The director was a contractor. So they were under a contract. When he made it. An employee, so the, okay, let me backtrack. So the contractor. Was not involved in any fundraising that was left to Penny. She did all the fundraising. And, 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 and the, the, uh, the director reported to her. And then when Steve changed it, made the uh, the director, uh, uh, a, um. A person, personnel of the Housing Authority. There was no one responsible for raising the money and Penny kept doing it. Because Laurie didn't have the skills. And then. When Jessica quit. Penny had made a suggestion for. Uh, you know, uh, Sue Young, who was an advocate. For us, for student. She, she basically helped us set the room back up and got Sophia Vergara. Involved. And, and giving us all the, the equipment we needed and. Going forward, Sue was hired. And as it turned out. She had early onset dementia. I, I figured that out when I went up to get them out of the program.
Let me, let me just interrupt you and say, I, I think.
No, I don't want you to interrupt me. I want you to let me finish. So now what I'm saying, Reg, is. I want Cheryl to have her chance in hiring her own director. Let, give Cheryl a chance. She hasn't had a chance. These people were hired and they're filled, so. I'm, um, let Cheryl see what she can do.
Okay, I'm sorry. I, I wasn't meaning to not let you finish there. I was just saying, we, we got the policy in front of us here as sort of the agenda item. So, um, but let me ask Jim if he has any comments. You're the new kid on the block here. Um. Have you, you, you work as a consultant in the educational industry here, so.
Yeah, not specific to after school. There are many niches of this, I'm far from an expert. Um. You know, I did, I was curious as Cheryl for some numbers of. Just to start to get a sense of context, how many students might be served, right? If I have it correct. Um. Currently, there are approximately six students ages seven through thirteen. Seabeds, cooks. Right, uh, you know, they're bored in high rock. But just trying to get a sense of what those numbers are. And then stepping back and looking at the whole ecosystem of services in Needham. You know, after school programs, which I know can be expensive, so there's, there's nothing, no easy things here. And um, I, I, I think in, in some, you know, I kind of like what Janet said is. You know, let Cheryl for. Based on the current timeframe, manage and, and figure out what's best for this year, right? Because all this takes time and. While we step back and say, all right, let's look at the broader ecosystem of services and supports. And see what is best for these students. What NHA can do and can't do under our, you know, authority too. Um, and consider broader things such as liability. So I'll, I'll, I'll leave it at that.
Okay, uh. Thank you, Jim. I just want to say that. You know, looking back twenty, twenty-two years ago. I had seventeen kids. The, the ratio has changed. Those kids have grown up, but a lot of them are still here. But they're not in that program. We don't have the criteria of children we had back then, but. I'm sure it's gonna come back. We're family housing. There's always gonna be families, but. Um. As you know, uh. Uh, in today's day, a lot of kids are still living at home, so. There's not room to grow so much. But we still have to maintain having that. Program.
Yeah, so I, I think our, 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 uh, our exception letter, whatever it's called, you know, allows us to serve a certain community. Uh, of kids and, um, but I just wanted to. Cheryl, what do you think we should be doing here? It's, you, you. You, Janice is saying you need to be able to get somebody on board and get this shaped up and obviously we have a now this. New executive director is stuck in India, then you have a, a even bigger problem than, um.
So we, we have to, we have to move some programming forward and I've been meeting, um. With our resident service coordinator on other uh options for programming. I'm confident that we'll be able to get someone from Northeastern to come in and help us to keep the program moving forward. In terms of its original intention, and that is to provide. Homework support and reading um for our students. Um, but as I, I included in your packet a little demographic of um. The students that are currently living at Captain Robert Cook Drive and out of the six students. Three of them come on a regular basis. One attends um the after school program at Elliott. Uh, one, her parent won't allow her to attend, attend because there was some vulgar language going on. Um. And then the, the older. Um, ages here, they come in for the snacks. So we really need to engage them. We need to, to, to develop programming that's going to engage them into um. The ability to be able to help. I know that since COVID, since uh post-COVID, the school department has done tremendous um. Changes in their expectations for learning and that students are reading more in the school system, so. I think that one of the things that we can do is. Reach out to the school department and find out what that curriculum actually looks like. I no longer do. The meeting minutes for the school committee, but um I was always fascinated to learn about these school improvement plans. And curriculum updates, um. And I know that uh during COVID, it was a, a huge struggle for our school, our students. And programming has changed tremendously. The, it's still a rigorous program. We want to find out. What the expectations are for learning, what the expectations are for homework and reading. And I think you want to start there and sort of um develop a, a game plan going forward with that. Again, we only have these three students who come on a regular. Um, but they will say, oh, I did my homework on my, on the school bus. One of the students was very engaged in reading. She liked to read graphic novels. And um that was, um, you know, Sue Young had introduced that to her and she was very excited about that. So really just being able to get down on the level where they're at really challenged that complacency. And offered them, you know, some incentives for engagement. That place is just. Beautiful. It's a wonderful place and we absolutely want to continue uh to keep that going. You know, when I was a resident at Captain Robert Cook Drive, I applied for a grant, myself and a group of women. Applied to the local church for a twenty thousand dollar grant. We received it. It morphed into a fifty thousand dollar grant for a program that's still in existence to this day.
I remember that.
So, you know, if you ever think about donating uh to a charitable cause, step, Needham steps up. Is that cause because it supports our students, our low-income families of Needham. So, but this is still, you know, this is still an ongoing conversation. You know, I will continue to bring updates forward. Um. I, Ed and Penny, I don't want you to think that I'm, I'm not. Um. We discuss and debate, it doesn't mean that I'm not um deceptive to your suggestions. I absolutely look, need your input and would like to continue to have your input. Um, but it's a, it's a, it's a conundrum right now.
Well, Cheryl, I, I, I want to add something that. You know, while we may not have enough students. To educate, we have plenty of adults.
Yes, exactly, exactly.
That, that we, and, and things that we can bring. Uh, but nighttime programming to the adults that we've had. Um, an influx of. Immigrants. Uh, we are so diverse down here at Robert Cook Drive right now. I think, you know, we should develop some programming. At least put it out there to see what, you know, to see what residents want.
We are working on that. We have tr- great service coordinators. We have an excellent service coordinator department, Ross, FSS, and our resident service coordinator. But we're bringing in EESL courses now. As we speak, Elena is doing great work with our residents and we're bringing some of those programming in-house. So we're discussing that now.
And I, I, I'm, I'm so on board with that because. That brings community building if we can communicate to one another. We need community building. It's so important. If we can't talk to each other, we can't. You know.
So I'm gonna set an objective, see if we can um finish the meeting by seven thirty, which is six minutes from now here. Is anybody, uh. Hopefully everybody will be okay with that. I'm gonna try to summarize a little bit here. Um, I think for number one thing is to get a new resident, a new program coordinator.
Program manager.
You know, because without, yeah, Cheryl doesn't have any extra time. Nobody has any extra time without that person on board. But, you know, obviously that's important. Secondly, I, I think we should have two agenda items if we, next month, if it's, if that's the right thing to do. One, you know, the after school program is focused on that K to six, which is where we started this discussion with Ed's. You know. You know, a, agenda item here. But i- if there's a need for adult education. I, I would add an item to this, you know, you know, because that's a whole different kettle of fish than what we've. Been talking, you know, it's, it's a different population with different needs. Like the ESL needs, um, you know, there are other resources like. Uh, Needham Adult Education that might be, um, so, um. Excuse me, we've got a meeting going here. Okay. All right.
Reg, I, I don't mean to interrupt. I know we have ESL with, with uh, uh, the Needham Education Department. But people are not really, you know. Willing to reach out, but if we had something right here in the community. You know, at least, you know, I, I would like to at least. Try, try that.
No, 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 I'm not, I'm not, I'm agreeing with you, but I'm just saying, let's separate, is there two different sorts of things that need to be done there? And then that's my suggestion. And then my third suggestion is Ed has put, put forward this, you know, policy. Recommendation here and um, um, what do we want? You know, is, is this something Cheryl that is? Has, you know, for example, have the parents of the three individuals at Seabeds and Cook. Um. Uh, you know, I, I'm sorry, not seabed, but I cook. Had a chance to provide input on this. Is there any, what would, what, what should we do? This is a worthy suggestion from Ed. What should we do about it?
Yeah. Um, I think we should, we should try to solicit input from our parents on this policy. And then bring it back at our October meeting. I, I'm all for the policy, quite honestly. I mean, it's. It's just, it's very simple and it's something that should we actually get the program up and running, that this should be our number one. Uh, mission and goal. That um, that uh the tutors assist the children with their homework and that the um. Tutors assist with reading skills. That's very important and encourage children to be uh for pleasure on their own. Um. And then the third most important mission is to have some fun. So I'm, I'm really up for the fun part. You know, we have, we've actually meet, met with Amy Goldberg, who is the um town's um after school enrichment program person. About bringing some programming in for. That space that would allow uh our students to participate via a scholarship. So, you know, we absolutely want to do these things. We want to do these things. We want to keep, we want to make learning. Um. Uh, fun and we want to, um. We want to impress upon our families and our students that learning is important, you know, education is.
Is, is there anybody else who we should get, be getting comment from? This side.
Uh, perhaps I could, um. Uh, that's a good question. You know, the um. I'm, I'm thinking of the principal of, of John Elliott. Um. I'd like to bring her in on this conversation as well.
Maybe we can get some early learning up there. Too. Like we had. Twenty years ago. We had, uh, we had head start in there.
So Cheryl thinks this is on the right track.
Yep.
And what do you think, Ed? And so, uh, is the board okay if we, you know, give her a chance to? Uh, get, see if there is any current comment. Because they're absolute, they are our primary customers here. If they look at this and say. There ought to be a number five with X, Y, Z on it. We should be having that in the policy as well.
Yeah, I, I.
And can we put it, can we get that done by the next?
October meeting, absolutely.
Is, is that sound good to you, Ed?
I, I have one observation here. We had a very successful model. Uh, it seems like we're recreating the wheel and the wheel was very successful. We're talking about all kinds of, of other people being involved and putting input into it. And all we really need, and what I'm trying to do is recreate. Not recreate, but reestablish what has already been established or historically established and was so successful.
And, you know, we we've got conversations flying out in fifteen different directions. And all I'm doing is asking, we as, we adopt this policy, these are the goals that we want to try to accomplish. Which is nothing more than what we had been doing in the past.
No, I get it, but the question is, so you would be against checking with the parents to see if they would like to add something more to this policy or change something?
They're gonna not want their kids to to learn how to do their homework and and enjoy their reading? I mean, what else are they gonna add?
So you're against checking with the parents?
Check with the parents and 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 we, you know, keep procrastinating and procrastinating and.
And this is the first time we've talked about it?
No, it's not. We talked about it three months ago. When I I introduced this same policy, Cheryl at that point, one, I wa- I. Introduced a mission statement, which is exactly what you've got in front of you there. And Cheryl, policy, so I changed the name to a policy mission statement.
Okay. No, no, this is, this is, the board can definitely do that. I I just think it would be a good idea. Maybe they won't get any comments and approve this next month. I don't think it's a matter of procrastination. I just. I know that every time we do something without checking the residents, something not so good happens, you know, um, that's all.
We kind of discussed same thing three months ago and nothing has happened, but go ahead, we'll. We'll uh, check with the parents and see if we get any additional good ideas.
Good.
I I think that policy should be adopted. We should vote on it. But we also have to recognize that the criteria of the children are not there anymore. That we had back in the day, that people just, but, there's no, that, we have a few, we have a. Under six children that are able to attend that program. And maybe we should go a little bit younger. I don't know, but.
Well, um, Cheryl, what would you recommend? You know, we have, Ed is very impatient and doesn't want to take another month.
I I guess it's not, I I'm saying that right now, we only have three kids that are attending the program. But going forward, maybe next year or the following year, as as we get more students uh, in in more. Um, families with children that are able to participate in the program, this would be a great policy to initiate. It's not um, it's not something that's gonna change anything currently, because we only have three students. The dynamics of students, when, when, when this program was started, post-three COVID. Has changed significantly. Twenty-two years ago, there's, there were seventeen students, you said. Now there are only three. So, you know, we can't tie these three students down to say, this is what you absolutely have to do while you're there. But I do like the idea of encouraging this as a policy to keep the structure of the program in place. When we have more students.
I don't think the student is the, is the issue at all. Those, all those. Statements could apply to three children or one. It doesn't matter.
That's why she's opted to keep the program.
They can have a lot of fun. They can have their snacks. They can learn how to do wonderful uh, arts and crafts, et cetera. Even if it was one child. And if those three children are beginning to really understand the program and benefit from it. It will grow.
Jim, what do you think we should do?
I. I don't know enough about the history of this specific program. I do know about some major changes in literacy programs going on. And Needham Public Schools. And I'm questioning, you know. Just, this is, it's a question. I don't have the background, but a question of, you know, are three students better served? In a program we're trying to create? Regardless of of what we've done in the past with seventeen in different contexts. Versus extending a program through NEDP or something like that, that's more aligned with literacy-based instructions happening at Elliott.
But you have to understand that these are underserved children, underperforming children.
No, no, I'm not. I I don't know. I don't, I don't.
So um.
I don't lay that label on these children.
Yeah.
I'm saying that the after school program isn't only for.
But. I mean, well, the 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 point is, we have um, great colleges, great college students that are coming in. To help these children. So we never want to shut that out, regardless of how many children there are.
They're set up. I think, I think both, I think Babson and Nobles are set up. Because the program was so poor last year and the year before.
Yeah, it it never came back.
Let me, um, let me try, let me just spend a a second. There's somebody trying to interrupt the meeting. He's been raising their hands. Why are you trying to do that?
Yeah.
Why?
Because I'm a resident.
Where?
Forty-nine Chambers.
Yes, but resident input was at the beginning of the meeting. I I was watching, you were not there raising your hand at the beginning of the meeting, because I was watching the screen. We, where, do we have earlier than six, so.
Oh, let her speak.
So, so uh, can you, want to take a minute? Okay, because um, Ed, go ahead. What do you have to say? No, you.
Oh, if it's gonna be such a distraction, please don't.
Yeah, I mean, um.
Come on, let's not get at loggerheads. You're here.
Okay.
Told you can speak, come and do it. Come closer so we can hear you.
No, I, it was earlier. I'm here to just right now, thank you.
Okay, were you, were you gonna speak on the topic of the after school program?
But I was gonna see if it aligns with these students that.
It it does not align with anything in the present. It operates under a waiver that was granted in twenty-ten.
It's a drop-in program. Children are able to go in and come out. There's, there's no requirement for participation.
I'm curious how it would align with the CDC.
Once you, um, stick around, we can talk a little bit with you about it afterwards, because we were trying to be in the meeting at seven thirty and, yeah, right, yeah, so. Um, I'm uh, stand by, happy to talk to you. Um, let's see if we can get to a conclusion here. Um, I think, when I, I don't know if there's consensus. Uh, but I think the right way to go is to ask Cheryl to um. Uh, in, to make sure that we check with the parents. Um, we check with. The school department. And one hundred percent guarantee that we put this on the agenda for next month. I would also have, have, find us an executive direct, not executive, but a, a program director here. And and then uh, and then we either vote on this particular policy or any tweaks that come from the parents or the school. And and finish this and not make Ed any more frustrated than he is right now. That's what I think is the right way of going. Are we all, is that okay with everybody?
And if I could.
Hey, go ahead. Yeah, one more thing.
I'd like to bring a a small report at the next meeting about my conversations with um, our resident service coordinators about other types of. Programming that we'd like to offer to that space, including adult learning.
Right, so let's bifurcate this um, internal initiatives up. Let's add a third internal initiative, the after school program. As it has been for years, it's fo- is focused on that K to six. Population and what we can do under the waiver that was gotten way back when, I think Penny did it. Um, and still is valid. Um, and, yeah, but it has lim- has limitations in age. It has limitations, you know, and that wouldn't allow us to do more. And let's add a third agenda item, which addresses other populations. And not only at, by the way, Cook and Seabeds or Seabed, it goes, but also High Rock. And I think we, that would help with a lot with the frustration. Everybody okay with that? Hearing no objection. Beg your pardon?
Placeholder, placeholder.
Not a placeholder. Um, you actually have a real report on for next month. That also includes the adult dimension of it that you raised a bit ago, that we have a, the population is shifting. We don't have seventeen K through six kids. We have, we have kids living at home. I have two of them myself that are twenty-four and twenty-six. Maybe, I don't know if I'd qualify for the program, obviously, but you know, it's, I I I recognize the issue. It's, I think, you know, it's a widespread issue in the country, so. All right, I think we're at the end of the agenda. Are we?
No.
No, one more thing?
Yeah, the the last item on the agenda was the site information for uh, Seabed's Way Captain Robert Cook Drive.
Okay.
So the contractor had submitted uh, their final documents for that uh, project.
Oh, right.
Totals, um, it's a little over two hundred and fifty-eight hundred thousand dollars. However, I do not have the substantial completion documents that I need from the architect engineer. Signed, notarized, and from the contractor as well. So, um, and the contractor wants his money. Um, so I don't wanna, I I really feel that it's inappropriate for us to approve. Paying the contractor without having those notarized documents and.
So what we can do, because if we don't do it this way, means another special board meeting, and we already have had. Enough of those, I think. Um, we can, if it works, you know, you know, we could, basically, we have two. We have the one for eighty thousand seven hundred and fifty dollars, um, which I guess is a um.
Payment requisition number one.
And then we have for the rest of it, it's two seventy-eight, two hundred and eighty-five cent.
Yeah.
We could do a motion that approves the payment of the subject to and conditional on receiving. The certificate of final completion, signed, sealed, and delivered from the architect.
Okay.
And that way, we, if the board's okay with that, then we wouldn't have to have another board meeting to do that.
Is that for PHNA?
No, this is for um.
Sunshine paving.
Sunshine, the paving.
Oh, okay, yeah, okay.
Which I think we're all more than over delighted with the result here, so.
The move?
Okay, so the move, which move, the motion you're moving is to approve the. Payment number one of eighty thousand seven hundred and fifty dollars as of, as you have a copy of here. Uh, and and then the second final payment of two hundred and seventy-six, eight thousand two hundred and eighty-five cents. Subject to Cheryl receiving the certificate of fine.
Final completion.
Completion from the architect, find, seal, delivered, and notarized, yeah.
Yes, okay.
And I have a motion from uh, Jim and a second from Janice. Hearing no further discussion, I will call the roll for the second to last time. Reg Foster votes aye.
Jim Flanagan votes aye.
Chad Schindler votes aye.
Penny Kirk votes aye.
Janice Bennett votes aye.
That passes unanimously. Now, are we at the end of our agenda?
We are at the end.
Madam, executive director. Well, we have a lot done. I mean, it it's always a long one when we have the annual plan on them, uh, so. Um, do I have a motion to adjourn?
I make a motion to adjourn.
Oh, good. This is seconded and motion is made by Commissioner Kirk. Uh, we'll call the roll. Reg Foster votes aye.
Flanagan votes aye.
Chad Schindler votes aye.
Penny Kirk votes aye.
Janice Bennett votes aye.
Thank you, everybody. Have a nice evening.
And you.